Meeting called to order today is Monday, March 28th. It is now 6:04 PM. Town council meeting with the West Warwick Civic Center budget.
All right, Jason Messier.
Here.
Jason Luchardi.
Here.
Mark Borchardt.
Here.
Mary Beth Williamson.
Here.
And President Goslin.
Here.
One is declared.
Mark, do you have any updates please?
Just for the new people that may be joining, I'll just go over what I opened with last time. Tonight is the second budget workshop, part of the town council process of reviewing and vetting the proposed fiscal 2023 budget. I believe that our department heads continue to be considerate of the town's fiscal constraints and the fluctuating status of the national economy while drafting requests that will support the continuation of services expected by our community and provide for the upgrading of capital items necessary to provide those services safely and more efficiently. Again, I like to acknowledge the hard work of our finance director, Kristen Benoit, in producing this proposal and assisting in my continued integration into municipal finance. This proposal process has been affected by the uncertainty of the finalized state budget, the national economy, inflation and supply cost. Just some key budget points. Our total budget increase is slightly more than 2.4 million, which is inclusive of a little more than 400,000 in municipal expenses, 1.5 million for school state aid pass-through appropriation, and a $500,000 increase request to the school department local appropriation. Our levy increase is projected with my proposal at 1.98% or essentially $1.3 million. Due to property revaluations, our estimated tax rate decrease amongst the various group is currently proposed between 21 and 34% depending on the valuation change, which the finance director will have more information prepared shortly. There are funds in the general government for non-union personnel salary adjustments. Capital expenditure request total $164,040. That was one of our major cuts in the hopes of proposing use of some American Rescue Plans funds for some of those one-time expenses. 100% of our pension annual required contribution is included. There were some adjustments in our working rates and also our workers' comp bills. Our tax collection rate remains the same at 96.8% and the proposed use of fund balance has been eliminated from this proposal. Again, this is our second workshop. Our public hearings will be held on the evenings of April 5th and 12th where adjustments can be made and voted on. The town financial meeting on May 17th with the all-day referendum on May 19th.
To clarify, some of that increase in the budget is directly from the rescue funds, correct? That's included in that number?
I didn't want to cut off from the speech, but we're on the Civic Center.
Okay.
Right, that was just the total.
Okay.
Town.
All right, I'll wait, I'll wait, all right.
Do you have any updates on the Civic Center? If not, who's going to?
Nothing new on the Civic Center.
Who's giving the presentation?
Yes.
The big copies that I have.
No, I don't have that either.
Thank you.
Oh, is it in here? Okay, I'll talk about it.
I'll set.
At 30.
Yeah.
Hasn't changed from that.
I'll take, all right, all of that case poses justice.
This is just a certain kind of. A little extra, sorry.
Yeah, we have this. Do you have everything?
I was very detailed, just so that if anyone has any questions or whatnot, we can go over whatever you have questions with and why not. I mean, obviously, general wages, they are what they are. The summer program wages are what they are. Payroll tax, medical, dental. The ICMA, life insurance, that's all the same thing. So if you want to just skip ahead to where it says supplies and expenses, it's a little further in there. And, you know, you all feel free to go over everything that I have there, just so that, you know, next week, if you have any questions or why not, you can ask me for them. But supplies and expenses, like I really just broke everything down so that you know exactly every penny that is the Civic Center is basically using and where it's going to and whatnot. It's not anything crazy or anything like that. I mean, we have the alarm system, just for the panic buttons. Wells Fargo is our printer. WB Mason is our, obviously, our office supplies, cleaning supplies. MDO, it's, you know, small repairs, paint, things like that. Acry grind is for the Zamboni. Those are the blades on the Zamboni. Kent County Times, it's for tonight. That's the only time we ever use Kent County Times, so that's the cost for the ads. Staples, we just buy toilet paper, paper towels there. Atlanta Trophy, they're a local business. I like to give to local businesses when I can, so that's where staff uniforms come from. Farmer Brown, he is the only person that fixes the Zamboni in New England, so that's where he goes. Nikko is the floor washer. We obviously supply our first aid box and whatnot. A fire and safety, they come, they inspect our fire boxes, they inspect the extinguishers, whatnot, security lock. There's more keys to the Civic Center than all of our houses put together and our neighbors. There's a key for every single door there. So Rinke Systems, they're just a company that the threshold where the Zamboni drives off the ice and whatnot, it does take a lot of abuse, so we do have to replace that yearly. And also, they clean the boards once a year because hockey pucks do make kind of a mess on whiteboard, so they come out once a year. And then just glass, glass obviously does break. The next page is major needs, major needs for anything that immediately needs to be fixed. So, I mean, I really have been lucky for the most part somewhat, but, I mean, I've only had one issue. Other than that, it's been really good. My, obviously, my general liability insurance stays the same. I'm onto the utilities and an ice shrink, it takes a lot of water, so that's where majority of my utility bills go in. The sewers, you know, Westworth Sewers, that's what we pay there. We have to have internet, phones, cameras, all that good stuff. National grid for the gas and direct energy, they're basically the same. One supplies it and one delivers it. So, weird little thing. I did put in a 2% increase just because I did kind of read and see how things were going to go and why not. So just in case it does, you know, any of these utilities do go up, I did pad a little bit of extra room in there. My wind turbines, 170,000 dollars, whether or not we turn on a light or we don't. My equipment, so the Zambonis, we now currently own both the Zambonis. We paid it off this year. So we do need a new compressor system for the ice shrink, so it's something that's in the works and, you know, hoping to get moving forward with it. I did budget $75,000 a year, so it gives me $450,000 to spend and it would be paid off in 2029. The investment on that is it would probably last about 20 to 25 years, so it was a good investment. We do have a vending machine inside the field house. Obviously during COVID, kind of stayed away from it for the most part, but now that COVID's almost a thing of the past, we'll move forward with that again. The summer program, you know, I have head counselor, 15 counselors, they all did get a raise because the government said that they all get a raise and has nothing to do with any of us, so I did put that in there for them. And then just the summer camp expenses, you know, toys. I do stay with first student, just your student that's here for West Ward that does, you know, the regular routes, just to keep them working throughout the summer too, because I think that's, you know, a really good relationship that we have with them. And then, you know, I rent boarder slides and like jumpy houses and, you know, we go to the zoo and we go to like skating parks and we have a good time. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for?
Thanks for the detail.
Yeah, I mean, I just figured it would be easier. I mean, gives you guys, you all have something to look at and, you know, if you have any questions for the next one, feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Motion to adjourn, I thought we were going right into the other one.
Second.
Full in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Nice having you.
All right. Meeting will be ready soon.
He's already here.
All right, meeting called to order. Today is Monday, March 28th. Town council and fiscal 20, fiscal year 23 budget workshop. It is now 6:14 PM.
Jason Luchardi.
Here.
Mark Borchardt.
Here.
Jason Messier.
Here.
Mary Beth Williamson.
Here.
And David Goslin.
Here.
One is declared.
All right, first on the list, Colin Public Library.
Good evening, council. Very glad to be able to do this in person for the first time since I became director. The total that we're requesting for fiscal year 23 is less than three quarters of 1% of the overall town budget. And I would argue that the library offers a very substantial return on the town's financial support. We do, of course, continue to provide what might be thought of as traditional library services. Access to books, both in print and digital formats, DVDs and streaming movies, storytimes and activities for children, public access to computers and wifi, and creative, educational and fun programs for patrons of all ages. In addition to all of that, the library has expanded its role as a community hub throughout the period of the COVID pandemic, as well as distributing thousands of masks and COVID test kits and hosting a vaccination clinic. We've also established ongoing partnerships with a whole range of community organizations who now provide services and resources in conjunction with the library. Some examples are a housing clinic for victims of domestic violence in collaboration with Sojourner House, resources on addiction and recovery from the West Warwick Prevention Coalition, and Narcan distribution by Hope Recovery Centers, free tax preparation services by the AARP, free healthy snacks for teenagers in partnership with Project Hand Up, employment assistance and support through Job Club Rhode Island, and one-on-one digital navigation and career services in partnership with Providence Public Library, programming for young people with learning disabilities with Community Living of Rhode Island, and classes for seniors in conjunction with URI's Osher Lifelong Learning Institute. A whole host of other community partners also have a regularly scheduled presence in the library building, including West Bay Community Action, Thrive Behavioral Health, Community Health Nursing, nursing students from Rhode Island College, the Ocean State Center for Independent Living, and the West Warwick Health Equities Zone, an organization of which we remain a very active partner. Our service to the community was recognized by the Institute of Museum and Library Services, who in 2021 named us as a finalist for the National Medal for Museum and Library Service, the nation's highest honor given to museums and libraries. This national recognition was accomplished through the efforts and dedication of an exceptional library staff. This same staff, however, remain underpaid across the board relative to their peers in other libraries in the state. For example, two of our librarians, holding positions that require a master's degree in library science, currently earn less than $20 an hour. Part of my goal therefore, for this year and beyond, is to continue to build salary levels and so allow me to retain and recruit the outstanding staff that the patrons of the West Warwick Public Library deserve.
Thank you. Thank you, Colin. Any questions for Colin?
Just under electric, you went down. We're just curious as to why you went down like 5,000.
That's the, because they're on the wind turbines.
That's all on the wind turbines also? Okay, just wanted to make sure, like, the electricity.
Percentage of usage went down. I know they had made a bunch of energy improvements in the building, so it's starting to show.
Good.
So there's that service, because the way, the way I think you guys work it is you take that service based upon their usage and
Divided out.
And they divide it out, so, and that's, that's why you see the Civic Center, 170,000.
Right. I knew the Civic Center was on it, with the way prices are going right now, I figured I'd ask that question. $5,000 less is, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
You better use it someplace else.
Makes the wind turbines better.
Yeah. Absolutely. Right.
You know, Colin, thank you for, you know, you and the library board for everything you guys do, you know, like you said, you're not just no longer a bookstore. You know, it's many services. I say year over year, it's how my new boss got his job. He came to Job Co., Job Co.
Club.
And club, and he's from West Greenwich and, you know, coming to West Warwick Coventry Residence, I hear about it all the time, so. Excellent job what you guys do over there for the amount of money.
Definitely one of the, one of the most underrated places in town, the library. People forget about the, you know, the great things that the library offers sometimes. But senior center and the library offering so many great things that people sometimes don't.
Yeah, and the, you know, I think the pandemic has, has kind of reinforced that feeling to some degree. People realize that.
I notice you have a big sign out there saying outdoor wifi.
Yeah, yeah.
Stuff like that, so, that's great. And I know, I know you weren't here for the rough years, but, you know, I know Linda and Nate were and, you know, they sat here and we had to make the cuts.
Yeah.
It's good to hear we can actually not cut anything out of the library if we don't have to. So, any other questions for Colin? Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire. You know how much I like this, so. You don't have to worry about it.
Red Sox haven't started yet.
Yep. And I just wanted to mention, I'm very glad that Colin had mentioned about them doing the, handing out the COVID test kits. They ran a clinic. And one other thing that he didn't mention that they also do is they serve as one of our warming and cooling shelters during normal business hours, so, you know, when people need that, their assistance, they're always there, so. So the fire department budget this year, we're looking for an increase of That's about a 5.7% increase and the majority of that is through negotiated contract benefits and salary obligations. So in the spring of 2021, we signed a contract that 5.7 represents two actual pay increases. So it wasn't just one, it's like two, two different years. It was a three-year contract and so that's all set. Of the, so 500 of the, $571,000, $558,000 of it is contractual obligations. The rest of that is about $13,685. And more than that, our fleet maintenance went up by 15,000. So I thought when I was making our budget that, you know, I stayed pretty true to where we were last year. So actually, I think, you know, we stayed very true to where we were last year. So it's pretty much with the, the exception of the contractual things, a level-based. This year, I did try to move some things around to organize our budget, and you'll see the supplies and expense account has increased significantly, and that is because we have vendor contracts, like RCC, our component of that. I moved it into supplies and expenses, so it wasn't taken out of like the radio communication budget. So that we, you know, I did the same thing with our outlook budget, so that we could take those expenses from that area. Have a question? I'm just trying to figure something out real quick. Yeah, yeah. All right. Any questions for the chief?
So you talked about fleet maintenance.
Yes.
The original budget that we received actually said through January 31st, it was at $84,000?
Yes.
And miraculously through March 17th, it's at $81,000. So is that just a reclassification that happened or, because expenses don't go down over two months typically?
So I would assume that that was just a miss.
A follow-up is, you're only putting in for 85.
So we, we have a.
81 now, we were at 99 in 2001, we were at 123 in 2020, and.
So we have a 1998 Sutfin ladder truck that has been very expensive to maintain. I'll be coming before the council next week. I don't know how much I can say. Mr. Williamson isn't here to stop me, but, you know, we are looking at replacing that with another used vehicle for a short term. Okay, we have a grant, as you know, getting ready to purchase a new vehicle. The manufacturers are telling us it's going to be two years until we see a truck. Once we place our order, that's now, if we wait another few months, it might be longer, okay? So we're, we're trying to bridge that gap. Refresh my memory, chief, the $123,000 year, that was the year the frame got repaired, wasn't it? Yes. It was very expensive, $60,000 repair or something like that. It was in that area, general area. So I think that's what did that, that year. I think there were, there were two, two repairs. I think we also had to replace the bucket on it that year. So it's just been one expense after another.
I just want to make sure we're being realistic. I mean, that's all, because it doesn't do us any good to set a budget that we know we're not going to make.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, okay.
So what happens when you, when you get the new ladder truck?
Hmm.
Obviously, it's very expensive. The old ladder truck, it's not just scrap.
We can sell it, like, right now, I've looked at it, I'll come before you again next week to talk about this. But I looked at a used truck that was listed for $90,000, okay? I believe that in a couple of years, we'll be able to recoup most of what we pay for it. You know, when that new truck comes in. So we'll look to sell it. Right now, if we go ahead and buy another used ladder truck, okay? We will sell the Sutfin and that money will go back in, so it'll offset what the cost is. It has some value, but it's, it's not serviceable without another major repair. The major repair would be about $30,000. The second ladder truck that we purchased that was used. Yes, that's, that's in service and that's running. It is, it's a 2000 and, yeah, it's, you know, to say that that's going to last us another two years, right, is not good, right? And I think, you know, I think the prudent thing to do is, is to be prepared for when that, that does have a failure. Chief, the second thing that I'm going to ask, and it's always been asked. Yep. 30% of your sal, well, your salaries is 4, 4,300,000. Your overtime is 1.3, that's 30% of your overall salaries. Could you just explain? And one of the reasons I'm asking, I know it was COVID and you have 1.8 million in 2021. You're at 1.1 as of January 31st, so I imagine the next six months is going to be a very. It is, so I anticipate right now, I have that on this, so I anticipate right now being around $390,000 over budget in that one item. I have about $165,000 in backfilling vacant positions. As you know, through the summer, we were short, we hired eight individuals this year. We have three more, two of them, two are in training, and a third will be coming over in March. So that is a significant expense. Some of the things that are going to be reimbursed are the educational grants that we did for professional development and ASHA training. Our whole department has been trained with the active shooter hostile event response. And they'll be able to respond safely to those incidents and work with law enforcement. Another thing is about 79, oh, close to $80,000 will be from FEMA for grant, COVID grant replacement, all right? So we've spent 80,000 that we got back from the federal government on that. We've put in for just under $11,000 for lizard reimbursement, and that's looking very favorably. So of the close to 400,000, about 335,000 of it is accounted for in those factors, okay?
See, I'm going to ask about alarm radio computer, that line item too.
Yes.
So your, your budget ask is 60,809.
Yep.
Through 317, we're at 93,466.
Yeah, so, like, the RCC payment, that's like $30,000 in and of itself. And, and the other major things are our email, we pay like per employee for Outlook, and, and those are the things that move to supplies and expenses.
Okay. All right, it's almost a one for one. Is it? That line went down 45,195, the supplies and expenses went up 45,638. Just shifting.
It was just, you just moved it to the other.
I just moved, yeah, yeah, just to make, you know, and I actually have a couple other things I should probably stop moving over there. Just so I have all the vendor contracts in one place.
Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense to make it more organized.
Yeah. Any other questions for the chief?
I had a conversation with him the other day and got some of these answers from him then. The training line is the only one I noticed is dropping back down, per the manager's suggestion. Is that, that, that's not the normal training that's for hirees, correct? That's what we talked about the other day, just so people are clear that we're not telling firefighters they can't train, this is.
Absolutely not.
So I just wanted to make sure that was out there, so people, when they see that drop, it's not, we're not trying to make us, we're not trained, it's a different training.
Correct.
Yes.
As for dispatchers. And, yep. Any other questions? EMA, why are you up here? Yep. So, EMA budget? 90 would be like 13. That's 1080. It's. Yep. Any questions on EMA?
Thank you for, it's been a rough couple of years, you did a great job helping to lead us, so.
A lot of people working together.
And you're right. And thank you, that's always your answer, and then, thank you for doing that, yes.
Well, some, well, I mean, but you lead them, so, I mean, it's easy, it's easier when they have a good leader that want to, that want to do those things to work together with you, so thank you.
Police Department. 16.
We can go good leaders, we have another one coming up here.
22 on this one.
Hi, good evening, members of the town council, finance director and town manager. This is my first buzzer, budget presentation and the first budget workshop. As you can see from my cheat sheet that I handed out earlier, it kind of compiles what our increases and decreases are projected to be. The total overall budgetary increase is $360,858. And that comes from a variety of factors. The first one is the increase of approximately $405,000. And though that increase signifies contractual obligations in salaries, wages, civilian dispatchers, longevity, holiday pay, civilian holiday pay, payroll taxes, medical insurance increases, dental increase, ICMA and pension increases. Those are all contractually obligated requests, and again, that totals $405,000. The next smaller part of requested increase equals just over $20,000. Those are non-contractual items that I'm requesting increases in, and those are the police copy machine line item for new equipment and, and increased leasing agreement prices. A small increase in shift differential and higher class pay. Again, we project a minor increase due to salary increases, again, which are contractually obligated. An increase of ammunition due to the increased number of recruits that we've been sending through the police academy, as well as increase in ammunition prices. A $2,000 increase in janitorial supplies due to more frequent sanitizing and cleaning due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. A small increase of $200 in the BCI evidence supplies, $8,400 in computer services due to the addition of a police detailed tracking software and the gov office website maintenance. Lastly, a small increase in police academy expenses related to, again, an increase in. Uh lastly, a small increase in police academy expenses related to, again, an increase in uh police academy recruits. So those two items together equal about four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Myself and the town manager worked together and we were able to uh cut uh about sixty-five thousand dollars out of that increase based on uh sixty thousand dollars for consulting services, which is our mental health clinician. We were able to find an alternate funding source for that line item, saving about sixty thousand dollars. We also, uh the town manager was also able to adjust the communication line items uh by five thousand dollars. And again, two small uh decreases, life insurance of four hundred dollars due to decreased total number of officers that we have employed at this time and prisoner food, just due to the decrease in arrest numbers and the length of stay that they are actually staying at the police department, specifically due to uh the COVID nineteen restrictions uh and obligations placed by the court. So again, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars was your initial increase. We were able to decrease that by sixty-five thousand dollars. So the approximate total budgetary increase that I'm requesting is three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Any questions for the chief? I do have one, if anyone else has anything, but we're gonna go back to overtime.
Yes.
You got nine hundred thousand in your budget and you haven't hit under nine hundred thousand even before twenty nineteen. So I I'm being realistic here, and it's twenty-six percent of your salary. Uh budget, but you know, I I see a number there. It's nine hundred thousand and I know the last two years have been I know we're shorthanded also, so um so I understand that will pump up, but I see you only have nine hundred. I just wanna be.
Yeah, I mean, I you know, I I spoke with the town manager about this. Again, this is my first budget process and and we believed uh collectively that we could probably get to that nine hundred thousand um mark with with overtime. And again, that's if things kind of fall into place. Um as luck would have it, i- i- it seems like it's it's already starting to not fall into place as neatly as as I would have expected it to uh based on some um recent retiree or resignations, um as well as difficulty in getting you know, the best possible candidates for the recruitment process. If if we're able to, we're in the middle of a recruitment process now. The oral board portion of that will begin next week. We are hopeful that we're able to identify um some good candidates to get them into the August Academy. And if that's the case, then we should really be able to do something with our our overage of the overtime uh line item, which is which is probably on pace to be about four hundred thousand dollars over this year. If if not a little bit more than that.
For the August Academy, what uh recap again, how long would be till they're actually on the force, though?
Well, they they wouldn't graduate until uh the end of December, and then they would have a nine or ten week field training program. So you're not looking at actually them onto the street until um.
April.
Yeah, end of March, early April. Yeah, I mean, we have, we have six recruits in the academy now. They are scheduled to graduate around uh May twenty-fifth or so. And again, we wouldn't look to have them on, you know, affecting overtime positively in until the second week of August. We're hopeful, and my fingers crossed, but but yeah, so I mean, that that's that's.
It'd be great if you you can get them.
And and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, is any of your details including that overtime?
I don't believe any of our any of our details are are included.
Keep in mind, when their overtime is running high, it's generally because they're covering vacancies and their salaries tend to run under. Like in my projection for this year, if I if you if I highlight all their salary items and overtime, i- it comes to sixty-six thousand dollar overage all altogether, because they're. That's not bad.
One of one of the things that that kind of, you know, hurts when you when you look at the grand scheme of things is we have, we have recruits in the academy now. We have six recruits in the academy. So the good news is we we have them on pace to come out of the academy, you know, start working, which obviously helps our salary line item and it and it helps our um overtime budget, uh you know, to a greater degree. The problem is, we're paying their salaries while they're in the Eric, while they're in the academy for twenty weeks. And it's not just a thirty-seven and a half hour work week for them. Most weeks, they're doing sixteen to eighteen hours of overtime. So actually, having recruits in the academy really does negatively affect us salary-wise and overtime-wise, because they're not here filling a vacancy until the second week of August.
So they get full salary in the academy and overtime?
They get eighty-five percent of a full patrolman's rate while they're in the police academy.
And they get overtime.
And they get overtime. And that's, I mean, that's federal law now. I mean, we we, you know, they, there's no, there's no tap dancing around that. I know when I went to the police academy, we made two fifty a week with zero overtime.
Same here.
So totally, you know, it's a if it's it's it's. It's very, it's very much different now and um but yeah, that's that's.
It was tough with two kids at that time.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, I was lucky. I was living at home, but you know, that that yeah, that was that was a difficult time.
Any other questions for the Colonel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh general government, we we're level funding our uh retirement severance payments. We're a little bit over so far this year, so given that, we're gonna hold steady at the three hundred thousand. Um we kind of bumped up sellback a bit a bit just based on the numbers. Now that it's back in the contract and active for the municipal, the sick and vacation sellback. We were a little conservative when we first brought it back into the budget. But um now we're seeing what it actually is is hitting with a couple of years of actuals, so we bumped that bumped that up a bit. Dental for the retirees, based on the trend, I'm just bringing that down to one fifty, but I am bumping up their regular health insurance to three hundred thousand based on the increases, the working rate increase that we had to put in place. Uh pension contribution is the ARC. Um workers' compensation, we're getting an extra bill uh this year because, believe it or not, they count the salaries for terminations and um your your severance payouts in the salary dollars. So they're billing us extra, which I'm hoping we won't have as many next year. So I kind of had to get um a little creative with with what I'm projecting it might come in. Yeah, actually, our rate that they apply to us um to calculate the bill is going down, which is a good thing. So I'm kind of a it's kind of a ballpark right there. I'm hoping it's gonna be less than that, but right now, that's what I'm projecting. And I did the standard eight percent for the general liability insurance. Still waiting to hear back from the trust to see if they have any actual numbers yet, but they usually don't come out till May, unfortunately. Around late, the Legion Cities of Towns provides us with that number. Telephone and computer services, we're gonna hold steady. Uh we break, we did a little bit more of a breakout, so some of the computer RCC is, you know, allocated to some of the different departments. Um advertising holding steady, uh fund balance is just the thirty-five thousand that he the town manager had put aside for non-union uh salary adjustments.
Any questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Oxen Rex.
The Department of Public Works.
I'm sorry, CPW. Evening, everybody.
So um I tried to uh do a at least as much as I could as a level funded budget as I could without everything else uh being contractual. We are asking for an increase of two hundred and thirty-nine, eight forty-seven. But that's, like you said, that's a lot of that's contractual. A lot of that's uh the majority, it's coming out of the the rubbish contract that goes up uh two percent uh every year. Also, we added uh with the help of Kristen, she helped me a lot, so I wanna wanna thank her. Uh we we actually moved um a couple of things uh to uh different line items to kind of balance out the original land. Uh we're taking uh things out like uh uh extra bins. Uh the bins that we um gotta pay for, uh were coming out of our supplies and expenses uh line item. Um so we changed that and we uh we added that uh forty thousand to the rubbish contract uh line item along with um the dumpster rentals. Uh like we have a six yard dumpster rental, uh a six yard dumpster at DBW. There's one at Parks. Uh there's one that's um seasonal for um uh the competent vets for for the for the Steelers. And uh let's see, and um uh that's what a majority of it um um came out. We are five, five employees short. Uh so um we we are under for general wages. We took a hit on COVID this year, so our overtime's a little higher than what we normally would like it. But and the winter kind of kicked us in the butt, so. So that's uh general wages, um the mechanics, uh 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 salary, everything else, I try to keep the same um except for the uh the winter needs. We, I kept it the same. But uh thirty-five thousand of that came um off the bat from the truck rentals we had to rent. Um we got more of that with the capital, but um so almost thirty-five thousand came out of that right off the top of the eighty thousand dollar line item. Traffic signs, um those are over budget. Did like forty-five dollars a pop. But for a stop sign, it's like seventy dollars with the pole. So we we've been putting a lot up there, so. There, we're but um as long as we can keep it somewhat relatively the same, I kept it that the same also. Petroleum, uh we get reimbursed by um all the other departments, so that's where that one's over a little bit. Like I said, rubbish contract and storm services for the winter. I mean, I'm I'm sorry, uh rubbish contract is is where we took uh the biggest hit um in the upgrade for the uh for for this year's budget.
It's sixty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Any questions for Freddie? You see the sidewalk preparing there? That's good.
Yeah, sidewalk repair and uh I've, I just wanna start somewhere, you know?
Definitely need it.
We also have a program in place and it's a resident who wants to put a sidewalk, repair the sidewalk in front of the house. The town will pay up to fifteen dollars.
It's a thousand dollars, but uh but hasn't been funded in like a long, long time, so.
See something like this, because if somebody wants to, it helps both sides.
I actually have it highlighted because the manager's going down ten on it. And just driving in, I'm looking at the sidewalks. I'm like, eh, if we can keep it at twenty, I think it's better. I appreciate that, but.
That was just one of the items that we could tweak in the hopes of.
I know, but even.
Infrastructure funds and seed money.
Those was in Ward Five. We really don't have any sidewalks in Ward Five at all, you know, but the rest of the town and, you know, we had those pictures all the bricks down in Phoenix and I know I know Ward Four needs some work too.
Yeah, Ward Four.
And three and two and one.
For sure. All right, no questions for Freddie? Thank you, Freddie. All right, Pax and Rex.
Good evening, everybody. Good yourselves. Um again, with Pax and Rex, too, we try to stay as level funded as possible. A lot of it's contractual. We did put on a fifth person, gonna be putting on a fifth person. They have not been uh hired as of yet. So we were really one person understaffed all last year. Supplies and expenses, as you can see, we were budgeted for seventy-five, we're a little over, so I put in for eighty-five. A lot of that was uh stuff that had to be repaired that couldn't wait, things we had to get. Other than that, you could see basically everything is pretty much the same with the exception of the payroll, excuse me, general wages and uh supplies and expenses.
Any questions for Jeff?
Tell me what the supplies and expenses are.
Excuse me?
What 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 are?
Uh you have fertilizer, um we have grub controls, we have weed controls, um stuff to get the fields ready, prepping the fields. Um fertilizer alone, as you know, uh has gone up almost twenty dollars a bag this year from what it was last year, so.
It's actually cheap. I have somebody come and do it at my house.
Well, well, it's very expensive. I mean, we look, you're looking at it almost a uh almost a thousand dollar per application increase this year as opposed to what it was last year.
I agree. Just if you use the four-step program, that bag went from forty-eight dollars to sixty-nine.
Yes, very expensive.
In some places, so.
Very expensive.
Any questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
So I'll I'll take the the first part. Um this one is always a bit of a challenge because obviously these are vast majority of big ticket items. Um so it's a significant expense and in the hopes of bringing a proposal before you that would be responsible of us for the taxpayers and at the same time providing appropriate services. We made some cuts, but fortunately, we, I think we have the luxury sadly, going through the COVID pandemic of having American Rescue Plan funds that we can utilize for some of these items. So the original proposal was in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars. And that was cut to one sixty-four. Um the vast majority of that were was the biggest part was two of the larger dump trucks. And then several other smaller vehicles. So some of that we're gonna be proposing. I'll be proposing American Rescue Plan funding for or some use of surplus money that we've attained through the gov deals selling of of town property to recoup from for the individual departments. Almost as a reward for taking care of things when we do sell like a Parks and Rec tractor back, that we can flip that to get them something better and not waiting as long as they've had to in the past um to work with less than standard material.
So I I'd started to ask this previously. Um so the money used for the rescue funds is not equated into the into the budget. It's all, it's all totally separate. No, I understand that, but it does, none of those, none of the money here is included in that.
The auction dot gov seems to be working a lot better than auction Westworld.
Significantly, that we should have an update on the April fifth agenda, so you can see where it is. It actually surprised me and I and I see it when it when it comes. It's it's impressive. I think we probably made more this year than in my twenty-seven years combined.
So Kristen, can you take like the last two years that we did the um the bidding here and then compare it to since we've gone to the auction dot gov?
So if you look at the revenue, it's that sale of assets. We did three years, we don't really do.
It was pretty fortunate.
Now revenues, we only do the adopted. I'll send it out to you.
Yeah, just so just so we know that, you know, in in the taxpayers know that we're doing the right thing with our own equipment. And I and I know like I, I've been, I've been to some of those here where you just put a bid in and I see items going fairly reasonable, I mean, without a doubt.
And it's a national reach. Obviously, there's people that have a connection that want these things that put a hu- much higher value on them than what you think you're just gonna buy an old police car for. It's, I was shocked. It's, I was shocked.
I'll give the Humvee that we had, we sold that for thirty-five hundred, which went, a lot of people bid on that. And I know it went right down to Phoenix and I think it doubled just by sitting there. Somebody came by, wanted it, said, hey, I'll give you this and that person made a pretty decent amount of money on that one piece. So go into the auction.gov, I think that Humvee probably would have did us a lot more nationally, you know, because they're hard to find. Oh, you do find, even though they're hard to find parts and everything else for somebody, an enthusiast loves them, let's just put it that way, but it's good thing when we get that comparison to, and we see what we have going on. Any questions for Mark on capital? As you said, it's down to one sixty-four right now. Versus his nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. You wanna do the second? Tom Sergeant.
All right, Bert, come on up.
That's a pretty simple one, seven hundred dollars for the cost and some taxes, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, I believe that one is.
Budgets that are under my purview, I have level funded beyond what I'm contractually obligated for salaries. There is a little bit of an increase in my board of canvassers due to the fact that I got a more senior employee in her longevity. It is an election year, so I expect us to say right around that forty thousand dollar mark to reelection. Everything else is the same.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Board of canvassers, you wanna do that one too?
So same, I'm sorry, I kinda covered that as well. It's just besides salary increases, everything is I'm not asking for anything extra. Yep, and that's the same story. There is a small salary increase because of, you know, raises through the unions, but other than that, everything is the same.
Town council?
Sarah also did that one, that is all level funded.
Just so everybody knows, the sunshine fund, that's flowers, stuff like that, that we have. Any questions for Sarah or the town council? Legal?
This one, we just reduced by approximately twenty-five thousand dollars because it's a non-negotiation of collective bargaining year, so we, you don't anticipate having that legal expense.
Any questions on legal? Hearing none? That is it. No questions for Mark? Or ask any other questions from department heads or the public?
But this is the time to say, I mean, I know people are gonna start asking questions, especially with the, with their getting their revows, so maybe this would be the time to get people, I know we don't have an exact number, but the tax rate is gonna come down a lot, so even though people's houses are going up, if they're watching right now.
Right, it's inverse, it's an inverse relationship. Will come down. How far it comes down.
Be the same for everyone, though, it, it, it's gonna fluctuate depending on how your evaluation.
Tax bill, their tax rate will come down and it depends on, like Mary Beth said, the, the percentage of increase in value to your house.
So I know a lot of us received an email this week about other cities and towns who are looking to look for legislation to stop the reevaluation. My opinion, I spoke to that individual personally. We spent a lot of money on the eval and we're not like other cities and towns, we're gonna adjust the rate and I, and I know they used Warwick as an example, they do their taxes a little differently over there. You know, as we're explaining this to the taxpayer, you know, saying the tax rate's going to adjust itself, but it all depends on your evaluation. Does that adjust? And let's just say, like I, like I said last time, if the average house went up twenty-five percent, that's where you wanna be or lower. When, when Sal comes up here and says the average house went up twenty-five percent, you wanna make sure you're within that twenty-five percent or lower, because that would be, the taxes would stay roughly around the same if you're in that twenty-five percentile mark. If you're below it, you'll probably see a reduction. Now, if your house went up forty percent, if you put pools in, you put decks on, new, you know, additions and whatever else, and your evaluation went up forty thousand. You know, that could be some of the reasons. Now, you know, you also have, you know, when the letter comes in, you have the right to appeal and it has an appeal process on that letter and it says in bold letters, I haven't received mine yet, but it says in bold letters, do not use the current tax rate. Because that will put you in a panic if you look at the current tax rate, because you'll sit there and say, oh my God, my house went up a hundred thousand and my taxes now is going over the four thousand, so.
Again, it's all gonna be relative depending on where we end up with the tax rate.
So to be, when we talk about tax rate, right now it's for a single family home, it's twenty-three dollars per thousand, so it will go down from there. That, so it's a rate that we're talking about, doesn't mean your taxes are gonna go down, it's gonna fluctuate, so we wanna make sure that everyone doesn't walk away with the idea that everyone's taxes are going down.
I'd also like them to know that just because your house goes up fifty thousand doesn't mean that your taxes are gonna go up based on this current tax rate, so both things are important.
And one of the concerns is that individual that sent us, they work in the finance department also. So one of the concerns was, okay, if the town did not look for that relief from the state, what would happen if we raised taxes four percent next year or whatever? And I said, well, that's something that we're looking not to do, obviously, we're gonna do our best not to do that. You know, but I think other cities and towns are looking at increases right now and that's why they're kind of nervous about that. And if they're a resident here in West Wall, but they have a fine notion what's going on in other communities. And, you know, I think we're doing our best to, we've done our best in, in since, I mean, Jay, you've been on here, just in, in Jay, I mean, year over year, you know, we were, we were required to put four percent, four percent, four percent in a five-year plan. And we kept it down to two percent, one point five, we did our best not to hit that four percent. Did we raise taxes? Absolutely, but we consider in this council and many councils before, we always try to look out for the taxpayer, we're all taxpayers up here too, you know, we all own homes, we all own businesses, we all own something, so we do our best to not only hurt, not hurt anyone financially, we try to do the best up here, because we're here and we go through the same exact thing that you guys go through and the general public goes through. So when we're sitting up here making decisions, making these cuts and, you know, some of you have been here for those tough times in two thousand eight to two thousand ten, twelve, when we're fighting over five thousand dollars and eight thousand dollars, and Mark, you were on that council when we were all bickering and, you know, cut the five percent from the schools and we, we had some tough times. Luckily, over the past four, five, six years, we haven't, things have improved and we have so much development going on, we have new businesses coming into town. Condos and, you know, buildings here and attic that nobody ever dreamt of, you know, and, and people still wanting to continue.
Not only they're there, but people, I mean, I remember when those condos came in, people were skeptical and they were gone, almost this, some of them were gone before they were finished being built, so.
So again, we look at the revenues, we look at everything and that, you know, Kristen, thank you, I know we're gonna be getting into our public hearings, but we, we urge the public to come out. Two dates, are those the April?
Fifth and twelfth.
April fifth and twelfth, come on out, if you have some questions, concerns, ideas, you know, stuff that we're not talking about, be more than happy to listen.
Dan, thank you.
Does that fall, that fifth meeting? No, but in relation to the town council? Earlier, later?
Well, they're both at six, so one is immediately following.
Council meetings immediately follow.
Okay, just so people know when they, they should be here.
So this, next, next Tuesday at six o'clock prior to the meeting is the first public hearing, I believe the same for the twelfth, which is.
And that one, we also have.
On Tuesday.
But the second, on April twelfth is not the night of a council meeting.
Twenty-six is the one where we have the wastewater.
Okay. So Chris, the last couple of years, we were in the very end when you get the, all the reports in, I think we were in the black, right, the last couple of years?
Or surplus at that, for, at the end, yes.
So I know when we, when we do the budget, we're looking at, is like five hundred thousand dollars is, is one percent, right? Isn't that we've used before? Approximate.
Yeah, well, generally the rule of thumb is like twenty thousand is a penny on the tax rate.
All right, so if we're like, the last couple of years where I'm confused, if we're in the, in the very end with all the collections and all that, we're coming in a million dollars over.
Last year we weren't, it was only a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Last year was an anomaly as well because we got COVID money. And that contributed to our surplus greatly.
But finish your thought, yes.
So, because it's been asked of me, especially during, each year during budget time, if we were in the black by quite a bit last year. Just say a million, one year, I think it was a million, a couple of years ago, where does that money go? Back into the general fund, right?
Yeah.
So it was brought up, if we're being taxed on that and then we're, we're not spending as much as we think, why can't that go back to next, to the fu, to the next year's budget as a?
Well, we kind of did.
Degrees for us.
We put a revenue source in as five hundred thousand of fund balance to balance the budget. And mostly because those surpluses were due to understaffing.
Okay.
Basically, and now we're pretty, we're getting up to full staff with people in the academy and whatnot, so, and it's starting to show, it's most definitely showing in this budget year.
Okay.
For sure.
And the charter says that we should have at a minimum, five percent for our general fund and, and the order that stood here and said we should have
Yeah, you know, I was.
Far more than that, so.
And with that being said, you know, when Ernie came in, he was in Malinsky, you know, the rainy day fund was a couple hundred thousand and it kept going down when he walked in the store and, you know, I mean, he some of the ways he did do it was not hiring people and, and making, making things meet at the end of the year and some of those surpluses with Kristen and Ernie, you know, and now Mark, you know, whereas by managerial decisions, you know, you know, some people didn't like those decisions, but it got our rainy day fund back over that three, three million dollar marker, so it was actually a little higher than that when he walked out the door, so. Again, you know, it was done through staffing and however else they could, plus some savings here and there and had some nice, not, not great winters, but we've had some good winters where we weren't, you know, over, you know, spending overtime. You know. Other than fire, I know they, the last few years, I know I asked the questions about overtime tonight, but, you know, they've stayed within that range, you know, and when you look at the things that have happened, you know, COVID itself, you know, people getting sick, so, you know, manning, you know, people getting sick and you gotta bring people in to cover their shifts and everything else, and then when you got a half a platoon out at one time, it's, it gets very, it gets very strenuous on the department heads as far as trying to keep that budget in line and you know, that's why I asked those questions, because, you know, chief, you had yours under and chief, yours was, you know, a little higher, but I understand why. You know, hopefully we can focus on those things and, you know, and make sure we don't have attendance problems and whatever else it may be, you know, it's just, you know, they have to do that as their department heads and you know, and we just gotta keep an eye on the budget year over year and I think Kristen does a good monthly report with us and we can catch that early. But, you know, I think as we catch things early, we gotta be a little more proactive throughout the year also, so that way there, if we see some overspending, we gotta cut something else to make sure we don't, so at the end of the year, and I, and I understand what you're saying, because there's been times even, it's been brought up, you know, schools, us, you know, school has a couple of million, we have a million, you know, but you also look at the pension contributions where we were, I mean, all of us were here when, except for Mary Beth, who were doing two million, three million into the, you know, pension fund and, you know, we're paying out seven, we're putting in one point five, you know, it was just, you know, eventually, think about that if that's your house, you know? So we, we, we're on the right track, it's just, it's not gonna be, it's something that's not gonna be done in two years, three years. We've already said the pension's not gonna fix itself for at least twenty, twenty-five years, you know, sins of the past, you know, from the nineties, you know, before any of us were on this council. But we're working on it and it's, it's in the right direction, I think, going with the state, MERS, I mean, we continue, I mean, just look at the little things that the council has done. Street lighting, used to be over a half a million, now it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, you know, just those little things and, you know, continue to keep working on those things. And, you know, sometimes, I gotta say, the last couple of years to make those tough decisions hasn't been as tough as going back to two thousand and ten.
And we have a luxury right now with American Rescue money. Again, we just talked about the requests were eight hundred thousand dollars and we're, we're only funding in this budget a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. We can't, we won't be able to do that. I mean, so we have to be realistic that we have a little bit of a luxury, but we still do need to grow that, that fund balance.
But I'd also think as a community, we were in a position where we could use those on some things that they needed. I know some neighboring communities used it to fill holes that so we were able to use it for things we really needed.
We, we can't create a structural deficit with, with that spending and, and Kristen and Mark have done a very good job to make sure that we're not gonna do that.
And one, I'll be first one to a minute, back in two thousand five, two thousand six, I came on the council in two thousand six, the two thousand five council leased that cell tower out there and I think a few of us stood up and said, don't, it's, it's revenue, constant revenue. Well, not only that, in two thousand six being one of the rookie council, we took that one point one and plugged it into the oh-six, oh-seven budget. Well, guess what? We learned the hard way in oh-eight, because now we need two point two and we didn't have it, because it compounded, so, you know, you know. Oh-eight, ten, yeah, so just, again, we, you know, I think this council has decisions to make and, you know, once Kristen gives us all the final numbers and informs the public, you know, what the tax rate's gonna be, the guesstimate of it anyway. And, you know, we know what the levy is, but we also when Sal gives us a little more solid numbers with Kristen, you know, we'll know more about the tax rate, what the percentage is going up, so, or going down.
So yeah, I was gonna go to that, but I know it's a little too soon to say, but maybe for the next meeting, I know that's gonna be the question people wanna know, the bottom line is they might not pay attention to a lot of it, but they're gonna pay attention to whether the taxes are gonna go up, whether they're gonna stay the same, so maybe by, again, I don't wanna hold you to saying anything right now, but at this point right now.
Yeah, I know, they're still scrubbing data, so I just don't wanna put anything bad out there, but it is going down.
But again, but.
Tax rate.
Tax rate.
And again.
Because of the revows, it'll be different forever.
Will be different.
Everybody will be a little different, but like David said, if you're in that twenty-five percent.
Whatever the percentages, don't use twenty-five.
Whatever the, yeah, whatever the average is.
Three years ago, when we had the the, the revow that was a statistical, we did all kinds of spreadsheets for informational purposes and I'm redoing all those again, so we'll have all those.
And people should be getting their revos, like, did anybody get them in the mail yet? They should, they should be coming at any time.
Email said that they were going out in the mail Friday, was it last Friday?
I, I think they did, yeah.
Yeah, so we should all be getting them soon.
Sal didn't say his phone was ringing today, so.
It wasn't in my mailbox today, so.
I didn't get any emails on it, so.
The new, I don't think so.
But again, just to warn everybody so they're, they're aware. To hold out, tax rate's gonna go down, so, yes.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none.
Thank you, well, thank you to both of you for, you put in a lot of hard work on all the department heads again, so thank you for coming out, hanging out with us tonight. Motion to adjourn.
Second.